Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this special meeting in the Bloomington City Council to order. This is, as I said, a special meeting, wasn't a regularly scheduled meeting. And we're treating it as we used to treat, I think, our study meetings. We've got one item tonight that we're just going to study through and work our way through. And other than the fact that we're down here in the council chambers and we are on TV, it is basically a study meeting. So that is the way we are operating this evening. Still with the protocols that we do have in place, we do need to, in addition to the call to order, we do need to have a roll call. So Mr. Brillett, if you would please, call the roll.
Councilmember Beloga?
Here.
Carter?
Here.
Coulter?
Present.
Lowman?
I'm here.
Martin?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Bussie?
Present. The record show we've got all seven members of the Bloomington City Council here this evening. As I said, we've just got a couple of organizational business items this evening, a discussion of the 2022 preliminary tax levy and general fund budget, and then our regular city manager and council updates. But we will start with item 2.1, which is the 2020 preliminary tax levy general fund budget discussion. Mr. Barugue, you're going to kick us off on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Good evening. As you said, Mr. Mayor, the sole focus of our meeting this evening is discussion of the preliminary budget and levy for 2022. This is an exercise we go through every year at this time. As Kari Carlson, our budget manager, is approaching the podium, and she will inform you, the city is required by state law to set a preliminary levy in September of each year for the coming year. And that is the maximum amount that the city may collect in taxes. As we continue to work through the budget process in the remainder of the year, we can lower the levy in December when we're adopting the final budget and levy. We cannot go higher than the number that we set in September. So we are going to try to hit through the highlights today and the staff, the city manager recommendation for where we land on a preliminary levy. We are eager to engage in conversation and see where council is at on that recommendation. And then we have September 13th and then September 20th are the next council meetings where we would likely discuss budget if there is a desire by council to continue to discuss it prior to setting the levy itself. So with that as the setup on the process, I'm going to turn it over to our budget manager, Kari Carlson.
Thank you very much, and good evening, Mayor and council. So tonight on the agenda, I'm going to go over, just to recap from last year, what the budget process was and decisions that were made. And also talk about the current 2021 environment that is affecting our 2022 budget request, changes to the conceptual budget that are currently requested from departments, and then time for discussion. So starting off from some highlights from last year. So last year, as you recall, the city was facing in 2020 a $7.2 million decline in lodging and admission tax revenues due to the pandemic. And also, as we were working on the 2021 budget, we were also forecasting for '21 a $5.6 million decline in lodging and admission tax revenues. So compared to 2019, before the pandemic, we brought in $10.4 million in lodging and admission taxes. And we were comparing that to only $4.8 million that we are forecasting for 2021. And if you recall, we did not know until late in the year of 2020 whether or not we would receive all of our property taxes. Fortunately, we did, almost received close to 100%, which is very fortunate. We were pleased that that happened. But we didn't know that until late in the year. Also, not until later in the year did we know that we could use the $5.2 million of the CARES money, the coronavirus aid relief money, federal assistance. And then we were able to use that in our general fund to offset public safety and public health expenditures that related to COVID. Also last year, the council and mayor formed or appointed the Community Budget Advisory Committee to help work through these tough budget challenges that were caused by this sharp decline in revenue. And basically, weekly from June through October, we met in here with the Community Budget Advisor Committee, and they worked to produce the three different budget scenarios that they presented to the council with different levels of priority, prioritized budget reductions, options for the council to consider. And last year in September, the preliminary 2021 tax levy was set at a 5% increase over 2020. But then the final property tax levy that was set for 2021 was a 2.75% increase over the 2020 tax levy. And then at the end of last year, as the council approved that 2021 tax levy, we were proposing that we would have a 0% increase for the 2022 conceptual tax levy. So that would be a 0% increase over the 2021 tax levy. And the way we got to that was we were allowing for some modest increases in expenses that would be offset by some forecasted increases in lodging and admission taxes, as well as tax stabilization reserves that would be transferred in from the general fund. And at the end of 2020, there were still many unknowns about the economy and the continued effects that the pandemic would have. And back then, we were just starting to talk about vaccination rollouts. So there's still a lot of unknowns. And then some of the decisions that were made last year during the, for the 2021 budget that are carrying over to '22 for the conceptual budget is that the full-time positions were reduced down by 23 positions. So we went from 585 full-time employees down to 562. The motor vehicle office closed. There was reduction in services for Bush Lake Beach, so no lifeguards or concessions are in the '21 budget or the '22. Creekside was reopened, but with reduced services from what they had before the pandemic as far as the number of hours that they're open and some of the programs that they have. The outdoor skating rinks were reduced from 14 down to nine, and warming houses were closed. There was a half-year wage freeze for the majority of employees, except for the two police unions that had settled their contracts early in 2020 before the pandemic. And then there was a decrease to training and travel expenses. Just to talk a little bit more about the tax stabilization funds, we identified some funds in strategic priorities that could be transferred over to the general fund to not completely offset the declines in lodging and admission tax revenues, but partially offset that just to help with the strain on the tax levy. And so in the 2021 budget, $1,165,000 was transferred to the general fund to help alleviate some of those declines in lodging and admission taxes. And then currently in the strategic priorities long-term model, we have $1.1 million designated for each year from 2022 to 2025, again, to kind of help with that decline in lodging and admission taxes as we don't think that's going to come back for about five years. And with, we did have a positive budget variance at the end of 2020. So there is, we're modeling about $3 million available to transfer into strategic priorities to accomplish this. As well, if you recall, at the end of 2019, we also had a positive budget variance that we had transferred $1.1 million over to strategic priorities. Another thing just to talk about that, you've heard this many times, from the city assessor, Matt Gerschmel, and also in previous budget conversations, but the impact from the market valuations on the property tax levy. So the 21 property tax amount that was levied by the city was about $66.5 million. And the way that levy is spread out across taxpayers is it's allocated among the property owners based on the value and the type of their property. And what has happened recently with market valuations that are affecting the taxes that are going to be paid in 2022 are that housing values have skyrocketed, where commercial values have decreased. And so that shift of this overall tax burden is shifting from commercial to residential. So even if the same exact amount is levied for property taxes in 2022, more of the share of that property tax will be paid by residential properties than commercial properties in '22, just because of that shift with the changes in the market values. And just another way to look at this, this wasn't the case for the 2021 property taxes. So for 2021, the median value home, the increase in the valuation was just 0.9%. That was compared to a 2.4% increase in commercial values. And so when we had the increase in the tax levy of 2.75%, that resulted in a 1.5% property tax increase to the median value home. And another way to look at that is it was about a $1.33 per month increase for the median value home. So now as we're looking at next year for '22, with the increase in the home prices and market value of the median value home, it has increased 7.3%. And that's compared to a decrease in commercial of over 9%. And so that tax levy increase, if we had a 0% like we have in the conceptual, that will result in a 7.7 property tax increase to the median value home. Or another way to look at that is $7.03 a month increase for the median value home. And we'll look at this a little bit more in some future slides. So that's some, just some highlights from last year and things that we were talking about and decisions that were made. Getting into the 2021 environment, kind of where we are now. So in May 2020, the Bloomington unemployment rate was 12.2% versus a pre-pandemic rate of 2.8% in February of 2020. So the most recent data we have now for June '21, for Minnesota, for the state, it's at 4.4%. Bloomington's at 5%, and the US is at 6.1%. Household income is stabilizing. The cost of goods, there is definitely an increase and inflationary impact due to the pandemic. And then as we're watching what we forecasted for admission and lodging taxes, that does seem to be tracking well with what we're forecasting. We seem to be a little bit higher than what we forecasted. But what we're showing for 2022, we still think it's going to be $2.5 million less than what we had received in 2019 for lodging and admission tax revenues. We did find out, we have found out since the conceptual budget that, as you know, we have the American Rescue Plan funding, the ERP funds, that we were designated to receive $11.4 million. Half, we've already received half of that, we'll receive the other half next year. And then, of course, with all of this, with recent events with the Delta variant, there's a lot of uncertain, economic uncertain because of that. We also had some resident and business surveys recently. And just here's some highlights from the recent resident and business surveys. And I know you had a lot more detail of this in recent, earlier this month. But just to highlight that Bloomington residents continue to enjoy a high quality of life with 91% rating as excellent or good. We had received high ratings on street maintenance, snow removal, traffic flow. Our safety-related ratings remain strong. And then also, the resident sentiment toward diversity and inclusion has improved. Some more detailed highlights from the survey. For the overall direction that Bloomington is taking, 67% rated excellent or good, 21% fair, 12% poor. The value of services for taxes paid, 66% excellent or good, 27% fair, and 7% poor. For the question about, do you think the economy will have, that what impact, if any, the economy will have on your family income in the next six months? 30% put positive, 50% had neutral, and 20% had negative. And then for the question that said, we know that COVID-19 pandemic is challenging in many ways. Please rate how much of a problem, if at all, the following are for your household currently. And for loss of employment income, 20% put a major or moderate problem, and 79% had a minor or not a problem. And then similar results for loss of income from retirement savings, with 18% a major problem, 82% a minor problem. For the business survey, there was a question that said, is there anything the city government of Bloomington can do to improve the business climate in the city? And only 6% of the respondents selected lower taxes, and only 1% of the business survey respondents selected city spending. And then outside of the pandemic, what do you think is the most serious issue facing your business in Bloomington? Only 3% of the business respondents selected high taxes. And on the question about the amount of city taxes, if it was a very serious issue or somewhat serious, 13% of the businesses said a very serious issue. 45% said somewhat serious, and 42% not a serious issue. And then on the question, all in all, do you think things in Bloomington are headed in a positive direction? Or are things off on the wrong track? 87% selected positive direction. And then on the question, when you consider the property taxes you pay and the quality of city services you receive, would you rate the general value of city services as excellent, good, only fair or poor? 8% selected excellent, and 74% selected good. And then for this last question here, we had, we said for your information, approximately 15% of business property taxes goes to the city of Bloomington, meaning on a property tax statement, there's amounts that go to the school district and county and state. Does this information change your perception of the value of city services? And if yes, does it make it a much better value, somewhat worse, or much worse value? 10% selected much better, 42% selected somewhat better, and 47% selected no change, and just 1% somewhat worse. So just some highlights from our recent surveys.
And if I can just interrupt real quickly, Kari. For the councilmembers, you didn't miss something. The business survey will be presented on September 8th, when we have the concurrent meeting with the Port Authority and the city council. So you'll see the full results then.
Thank you. The next area I wanted to go over, some of the organizational issues that are affecting this, where we're at right now with the 2022 budget request. So since the end of last year, when we were looking at the 2022 conceptual budget, wage assumptions have definitely changed. The labor market is seeing a sizable wage growth. There are labor shortages, and there's increasing inflation concerns. And when checking with other metro cities in our comparison group, no other metro city imposed a similar wage freeze for 2021 that Bloomington did. The council did approve a 1.5% general wage increase that was effective July 10th, and reinstated wage step increases for eligible employees. And then for the 2022 budget, it does include a projected cost of living adjustment and wage step increases for employees that are eligible for that. There are also some council-directed initiatives such as the Earn Sick and Safe Leave, conversion therapy ban, opportunity housing ordinance, expanded racial equity work, where in a minute here, I'll go over some of the new positions that staff has identified to carry out some of those initiatives and what impact that has on the budget. We're also facing some service delivery demand issues, particularly in the fire department and fire staffing, which you've heard from that before from Chief Steele, and also increasing workload and demand in other areas as well. The fire department, the paid-on-call model, is continuing to struggle with recruiting and retention of qualified, capable, willing candidates. To relieve that, we are using some of the American Rescue Plan funds for the next three years to hire three full-time battalion fire chiefs. But there's also a need for additional funds for critical costs that are associated with fire department duty crews, increasing both pay and hours. And then there's some other departments that are facing increased workload with planning, purchasing, payroll, grant compliance, and also in police and property and records. This next slide is, these are just issues, they have a net effect to the budget of $0, but it's going to have some shifts between revenues and expenditures that I just wanted to explain as we're looking at this in the next few weeks. So they're really just auditing or accounting changes. So the first one is park maintenance charges. Previously, were in the facilities fund, and then they were charged back internally to the general fund. So all of the funds were salaries, benefits, supplies, materials, all of those were in the facilities fund, and then it was a charge back to the general fund. And to make it more transparent and to better be able to track where park maintenance charges are in the general fund, it's going to be just a direct charge right to the general fund under Public Works. So you'll see a shift when you're looking at the general fund budget. The park maintenance budget is going to decrease, and the Public Works budget is going to increase. But those are basically offset. And then the other change happen is with our public health, and it has to do with, like annually, public health distributes about $1.5 million in non-cash WIC assistance, so women, infant, and children assistance, to clients to purchase supplemental food. And it's federal funding that passes through the state of Minnesota. And in our most recent audit, the external auditors requested that the city account for these non-cash transactions as a revenue and an expenditure. So our revenues went up by $1.5 million, and our expenditures went up by $1.5 million, but the net is zero. But just to explain that, so if you're looking at the budget, that's why it looks so much higher. This slide is our municipal legislative commission, the MLC cities, that we frequently use in our comparisons. They include Apple Valley, Burnsville, Eagan, Adana, Eden Prairie, Lakeville, Maple Grove, Minnetoka, Plymouth, Woodbury. We don't have their names on this slide because they're not official preliminary numbers yet, but this is just in our group with the city managers and financial directors, CFOs, what they've shared. Most of these, with the exception of Minneapolis and St. Paul, didn't really experience the revenue loss that we did, like we did with our lodging and admission taxes. Minneapolis and St. Paul were more public with what we had there, so we have them listed at the bottom. But when you take all of these together, it's averaging about a preliminary tax levy increase of about 5.1%. So next, here are just some of the, there's more than this as far as changes from conceptual budget to where we're at right now with this requested budget, but these are the big ones. These are the main changes that are causing an increase. And the first one there, and I have some more detail in this next slide, is for some additional staffing of $829,000 for council initiatives and some increased service demands we're experiencing. $982,000 for the adjustment with the adjusted base salary and benefits. And then $1 million for the paid-on-call fire department, the duty crew hours that I was talking about. So that's $2.8 million. And then the other changes I was talking about that do not have an effect, but are, because they're being offset, is there's $400,000 for the three new fire department battalion chiefs, but that is going to be covered by the American Rescue Plan funds, the $1.5 million of the non-cash WIC revenue and expenditure. And then it's about $5.8 million that shift between parks and recreation and then Public Works for the park maintenance. So this, these are the positions that are being brought forward to implement some of the new initiatives that we're working on or to put more energy behind initiatives that we've already been working on. So, and this, it's not just salaries, this would be fully, the full cost of salaries and benefits. So for two new positions to help with compliance would be $234,000. And a new, another racial equity position and some expanded with what we already have, $109,000. Part of, last year, we took away one of the part-time HR positions that are requested back. A new planner in community development, a new public health specialist, changing a current employee that's part-time to full-time to meet the needs in the police property room. A grant coordinator, which we have there that, we're not showing it this way, but we're showing, but with a note that possibly some of that could be offset with some new grant revenues if we have a grant coordinator. And then an accounting assistant for helping out in purchasing and payroll. So all of that together is $829,000. This is just for the general fund. So these are just additional staffing that would have a property tax impact. And so it would be eight new full-time and one new part-time position. And, okay, so this next slide, what we have here is, from on the left, it's if there was no tax levy increase for 2022, so 0%. And then it goes from 0 to 5. And the first line there where it says tax levy dollars, that is how much the overall tax levy would increase. So basically, each 1% is about $665,000 more that we would levy. And that tax levy impact is what I was talking about before, where even if we don't have, even if we have a 0% increase, we don't increase our overall tax levy because of that shift from the residential to commercial, that the median value home would have a $7.03 increase per month. And that third line is tax levy impact that's independent of the market value. So if we were to increase it more, or if we had to have any increase, that's what that's showing. So for example, like at a 1% tax levy increase where we're going to levy almost $665,000 more, that would be $8.09 more for the median value home per month. And it's, and a dollar six of that is because we increased the tax levy, where the other portion of that is simply because of property valuations and how Minnesota law, how we allocate property taxes. And so that goes across all the way up to the 5%. And then that line with the use of tax stabilization, so that's where we're trying to use the money from the Strategic Priorities Fund to help. strategic priorities fund to, to um, to help with this, this tax uh with a revenue loss. And so our goal is to only use 1.1 million, that's what we've modeled. And so if we can keep it flat, if we don't raise our taxes at all, and we only uh bring in 1.1 million from strategic priorities, we have a funding gap of about 1.7 million based on everything that we have in there right now. And so as you can see, as it goes, if we do a one percent, a two percent, a three percent, if you get to like the two and three percent, that's where the funding gap would go away.
I just reemphasize what Kari was saying about the tax stabilization goal for, I know the council is aware of this because we've been talking about it for the better part of a year now. Uh, the, i- for folks who are watching though, and don't spend a lot of time talking about city budgets, when we set up the tax stabilization uh uh reserve within our strategic planning, our strategic priorities uh fund, the intent was to smooth the next few years as we're managing through our, our revenue losses, Kari said. The 1.1 is a goal. We've tried to stick to that uh because frankly, uh that's, that's where our comfort level is in terms of building out of this several years from now. I think that if we were to increase the amount of uh tax stabilization that we are using from strategic priorities, it just creates a tougher circumstance several years down the road. So uh staying in that range of 1 million dollars for the next few years can be sustained based on the, the funds within the strategic priorities and, and what we anticipate to be in there over the next several years. Uh, if we go higher than that, then I get concerned that we're not going to be able to sustain that approach for a number of years. And then again, uh just to reemphasize that third line, uh because this is a new line that we have not included before, uh but it's looking at the tax levy impact and it's isolating out the market value. So, you know, when folks get their, their proposed notice of taxation in the middle of November, uh leading up to our, our final um budget and levy adoption in December, it will reflect the number um that the council decides in September for the preliminary levy. But it's also going to be based on what their change in market value was. And council knows this too, but just making sure folks who are watching follow along. Valuations for their property that will be the basis of their taxes paid next year were determined last April. And so uh as folks get that statement in November, the proposed taxation will be based on the valuation set in April of this year. And so again, that's the um seven dollar increase. The median value home in the city of Bloomington went up about 7.3% in value, and that is based on uh comparative sales within their neighborhood. Uh, so increasing valuation of homes is uh in most circumstances a good thing. That's a net positive for people. For, for many people in our community, their home is the single largest asset that they have in their value portfolio. So to have that asset improving uh in value is a good thing. It also happens to be that our taxation system is based on the valuation of the property. So what we've tried to do with this slide is isolate how much of that tax increase would be due to the decisions of the city and how much is due solely to the, the market and the valuation of their home. So if you're somewhere in this one to two to three percent range, uh it's about a 12 to 38 dollar impact for city services based on the information that we have today, just because of what the city is doing differently. Any other change on the property notice, property tax notice is gonna be driven by valuation. Does that make sense to everybody?
Council, questions on that? Councilmember Loman?
What's the timeframe that we're looking at here with this? Is this per month or is this per year? What, what's the uh, what's the timeframe?
The, the dollar figures that are listed here, these are per-month uh city tax.
Anything additional? All right, please, continue.
So that is the end of um my presentation. I'll turn it over to city manager Jamie Verrogi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, I do just want to go back a couple slides. Uh, Kari, can you go back to? Uh, it's page 12, I can't tell you what slide it is, the, the three drivers of the um, yep, there we go. So on a subsequent slide, you saw us highlight the um staffing changes. We didn't have a slide related to the adjusted base salary or related to the fire department duty crew. So I just want to touch on those two real quickly, uh since we didn't talk about those. The um adjusted base salary and benefits goes back to what uh Kari was mentioning, mentioning earlier with the adjustments that the council approved in July. Uh, we had a wage freeze in place for the first six months of this year, and uh that wage freeze was lifted in July. And that's the result of uh both labor relations and the competitive um uh market around the city of Bloomington and the metro area, which influences, influences a lot of our um salary uh wage uh information. So the decision to do that in July uh has an effect in uh 2022 to that 982,000 dollar level. Uh, so that is an increase that is um uh not one that we can necessarily adjust unless council uh wants to look at the staffing levels for the city, because those are, those are baked in to our city operations. And then the fire department duty crew hours. Uh, just want to reemphasize again, uh over the last couple of years, we have been looking at the, the current state and the future state of our fire department. Uh, you'll recall that we had a service assessment of the fire department done by a f- a firm called Citygate. And uh they, they took the department apart and uh identified some really important issues for us to consider. And among those issues are response time and response capacity. Uh, so what we have continued to see uh since that service assessment was done is that the, the response time and our ability to mobilize um our firefighters uh to calls is um being significantly challenged. And it's being challenged by a couple of factors. One, um we're seeing increased calls for service, but two, uh recruitment for uh paid-on-call firefighters is very challenging in this day and age. And so uh, you know, we're trying to deliver uh greater service with fewer people. And uh we're running into issues where uh we don't have fully-staffed apparatus that are rolling at the time of call-out. We eventually get folks there and uh in most cases, I should say in nearly all cases, uh we uh get the job done, but it is going to continue to be an issue. So council's been made aware of this. Um, what the fire chief is proposing is that we expand our duty crew staffing of the fire stations, which means that our paid-on-call firefighters would have um hours that they are present in the station, that they are committed to, um similar to a full-time firefighter um model. But it would continue to be our paid-on-call firefighters, and so they'd have to rotate all of those folks through on basically shifts that they would sign up for, ultimately be assigned for if necessary, so that we can maintain in-station staffing and we don't have to rely on firefighters responding to the page or the call-out. Um, that will improve, improve both of our, both our response time and uh the, the in frequency or infrequency of having um apparatus rolling without fully-staffed complements on those pieces of apparatus. So that's gonna be a policy issue for the council. And at the same time, the council's also aware that we have submitted uh what's called a SAFER grant to the federal government for 18 full-time firefighters. And if, if we are awarded that grant, that we would uh, we would be moving our department operations to more of a hybrid model of having full-time firefighters uh complemented by um paid-on-call firefighters, both in um staffing at the stations on a regular basis, but also on continuing to utilize POC for uh call-out or for uh responses. If we receive the SAFER grant, uh it will uh reduce the need to staff with paid-on-call firefighters, but it will likely not reduce it altogether. So uh if we are successful receiving that grant, then we can back down this 1 million dollar number. Um, but it's not going to go to zero, um because we'll still be supplementing our full-timers with paid-on-call firefighters. Uh, so in this case, uh this is a policy decision for the council, and it's a policy decision that's hopefully gonna be best informed uh when we know the outcome of the grant, which uh was supposed to be sometime in the August, September timeframe, and we're hoping that that notification is still on track so that we will be able to uh have this discussion prior to December when we adopt our final budget and levy. So uh and, and then the first one, the, the staffing changes is certainly one that we'll want to discuss with council over the next couple of months as we look at the operations. So those are the three drivers uh in the budget for this conversation that are resulting in the recommendation for a three percent preliminary levy. And uh I think we'll open it up for uh discussion and questions from the council at this time.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Carlson, thank you, Mr. Verrogi. Council questions on this? We've heard it all laid out, we've heard the um uh, the details behind it. We've heard what we had last year and what we're looking at this year and how it all stacks up and what the budget drivers might be, and um looking for some feedback. Councilmember um Carter and then Councilmember Beloga, Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I'm just wondering if we have any information on kind of projections for when the commercial market will rebound?
Verrogi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We are right in the middle of the next assessment period uh for the following year, right? So this is always hard to explain for folks, is there's a significant lag time in the period when a property is assessed for its valuation, and then when that valuation is assigned, and then when that valuation is taxed. And so uh the period that we're in right now uh gets wrapped up in about October of this year. Uh, and then that will be utilized for setting values in April that will be taxed in January of '23. Uh, so that's a long way coming around the corner, Councilmember Carter, to say, no, I don't have a good idea yet of where we're at on commercial industrial values. But we can check in with our assessing team and uh see, you know, where they think that we're gonna land. It's a, it's a good, I appreciate the question because I think it's a good reminder again that this year, this coming year for '22, uh we had a relatively unique environment is that we had a, an exceptionally um positive uh environment for single-family residential, uh you know, sales, everybody's been seeing what's in the newspaper and information about how long houses are on the market, if there even are houses on the market. I mean, you know, supply is very low, they're on the market very few days, and they're getting um uh, the, the asking price is usually being met or exceeded in almost every case. And so what that's doing is it's creating upward pressure on valuations. And so that's about uh seven, like I said, 7.3% was the market value uh increase for median value homes this year. At the same time, the pandemic hit several uh econ- several industries pretty hard that happened to have a pretty significant presence here in the city of Bloomington. Uh, retail and um lodging, uh both took pretty significant hits this year. And the reduction in commercial industrial value uh combined with the increase in residential value has created this situation where um there's a little bit more of the tax burden being shared by single-family homeowners than uh you, than is usual in the community. Historically, Bloomington is one of, if not the only state, city in the state that has uh single-family residential properties representing less than half of the total tax base. That's a really good thing for our homeowners. Uh, and this, this past year is one of those situations where um the market conditions related to commercial industrial, combined with the positive market conditions for residential housing, mean that we're just shifting a little bit towards housing when we, when we're doling out the, all the taxes.
Got it. Um, so I guess my follow-up question, you know, we are planning to have this tax stabilization money through 2025. Is there any way we can kind of front-load some of those resources? So that we have, just, I mean, I'm thinking about, you know, by 2025, hopefully, you know, fingers crossed, retail and lodging will be in a much better position. You know, there will be a shift back to the commercial tax base a little bit at least. Like, is there a possibility we may not need those tax stabilization funds in 2024, 2025? And I understand it may not be possible, but I want to ask the question.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, it's a good question to ask. Uh, and, you know, if we were just doing our budgets on sort of a one-year or a two-year um look, then it might be one that we would say, yeah, that might be a decent idea. W- we're modeling out a number of years into the future, and the most important figure for that modeling right now is the recovery of our admissions and lodging tax. That's the one that's really gonna tell us whether we have the uh flexibility to do exactly what you're asking Councilmember Carter. And uh what we're seeing right now, um our staff is meeting every two weeks. They go through all of the economic data, all the trends. Uh, we're seeing that this is probably going to track very similar, similarly to uh 2010 and the downturn then, when it took about four to five years for those revenues to recover to the period they had been at prior to uh the recession. Uh, we're, we're seeing a similar build-back time uh again this time, which takes us out to about '24, '25. So that being, you know, the biggest wild card in our revenues, that's one that we're not forecasting is going to increase more than we expect. If it were, then we might have that flexibility. So again, long way of saying, I wouldn't advise doing that, but if, if council wants us to look at it, we can certainly model it.
Okay, thank you. I have more questions, but I will wait.
Councilmember Beloga?
Good. Uh, I also have a number of questions, and I'll ask a few of them now and then let somebody else uh ask. So we always do two years, have we uh also modeled the 2023 levy increase?
We have. Uh, in fact, Kari just ran the model earlier today, and so this is very preliminary. But Kari, why don't you go ahead and pop that slide up there?
So for, this is what it looks like with a three percent um tax levy increase. And then for 2023, this, if there is a three percent tax levy increase, I had a 5.31% modeled, but that is if we have a one and a half percent increase that's for debt service. So the part that's not related to debt service is that 3.81%.
Okay, um, thank you. And then I would take it that the authorized full-time headcount for what's being presented is 562 plus the eight, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Councilmember Beloga.
Or is it 562 plus eight plus three?
Oh, plus the three battalion, the battalion chiefs? It is, that's right, sorry. Thank you.
And then if we look at, and, and we've always traditionally looked at the uh increase in the market value uh home and, and, you know, the average market value or median market value, rather, I should say. But if we look at the increase at three percent, starting at $200,000 and then doing it um at $50,000 increments, does that kind of curve show that the lower-valued homes will get a significantly higher percentage increase because of the distribution? Because of the distribution of market value in that bracket? And same with the 250 and maybe 300 and 350 homes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Beloga. Let me just try to restate the question. I understand what you're asking.
It's a little cumbersome.
Yep. Homes that are valued less than the median value home. Are they going to see a greater or a lesser tax levy impact? And similarly for homes that are valued higher than the median value home? We can have our assessing office look at some different levels and produce that information. The the challenge is that it's not, it's not real easy for us to model a price range or a valuation range because each of the individual homes in that range have probably different circumstances. So a home that's at $250,000 in one part of town may have increased at 4%. And in another part of town may have increased 9%. And so the increase from year to year is going to affect the tax levy impact as much as where they are at in the valuation scheme itself. And the same goes with homes that are valued more than the median value of $307,000, which is our median for 20, pay 22. So we can have assessing wholesome numbers at different ranges to see what those impacts are. But it won't fully answer the question, Councilmember Beloga, because each home, just as it won't with every home that's at the median value. You know, if somebody's in that 300 to 310 range, they're not necessarily going to have the exact same number just because each home circumstance is different in terms of how their valuation has changed from one year to the next.
Absolutely, but it also shows more information on the movement between the various brackets. And my sense of it is, is that the entry level homes, the lower cost homes will be at an accelerated rate throughout the city as opposed to the higher value homes. And I'd like to understand if that's, if the numbers bear that, all the factual data.
And just if I can ask for clarity, Councilmember Beloga, is that the amount of valuation increase for the lower valued homes? Or is it just the the share of the of the impact? Do you understand my question?
It's I I think to get the share of the impact is kind of too hard. It's the year over year comparison.
Yeah, yeah. I think one thing we'll ask the assessing department to model for us is which strata within the within the valuations have seen the largest increases. I think that will tell us, right? So if homes in the 250 to 275 range are increasing at a pace greater than the median value home, then yes, they're going to have a greater impact because it's it's going to be based on what that comparison is to the 7.3%.
Very good. And like I said, I do have more questions, but I will pass the baton on to the next council member and follow up with some more later.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I plan to ask all my questions. My colleagues are very patient and nice. So, no, I'm kidding. I just got a couple here quick and I appreciate Councilmember Beloga's question regarding the impact at different price points. That was one of mine. The other part of that, just to follow up, is the impact on apartments and what some of the people living in our apartments might be experiencing because of this. Because I think that might fall in between housing and commercial. And so it would be interesting to know for those that are renting in our community, how this might impact them.
And Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, we did a similar analysis last year when we were working through Cback. So Kari can work with our assessing folks to see what information we can glean from that as well.
Great. Thank you. And then for clarification on the budget stabilization, is that, and this is probably just a memory issue on my end, but is that entirely from the federal dollars? Or do we also have po- positive budget variance towards that? And or do we have project, positive budget variance that we could put towards that?
Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember Nelson, that is, it's it's not from the American Rescue Plan funds. Those are, it's money that we have modeled in our strategic priority fund from positive budget variance that we already know about.
Okay.
And and Councilmember Nelson, we do have about $3 million that is not allocated yet this year that likely will be recommended to the council to be moved into the strategic priorities fund. And it's that assumption that is providing for the tax stabilization moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Last year, obviously, we had the committee that made recommendations to us. We largely adopted what they had recommended to a certain level. But in that, we made budget cuts to a variety of programs. Does the budget for next year assume that those will continue? Does it assume that they will go back to what they had been pre pandemic? Or what are the assumptions in the budget with regards to the decisions we made in the 2021 budget?
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, for the most part, those decisions carried through. So they were permanent decisions where the positions that were reduced or if are terminated were not carried forward. In some of the cases, like for for training that was reduced or travel, that some of that was brought back. But a lot of those those big decisions that were made were carried forward.
Okay, just in general, it'd be nice to kind of see if any of those assumptions had changed, like the travel and things like that. Just so we have an understanding of 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 that portion of the budget, I guess, considering that the Budget Advisory Committee spent so much time making those recommendations. If we're going to unwind them, it would be nice to just do it explicitly. So thank you for the clarification. And then the last question I have, which is probably a series of three questions, but I'll just call it one question, is regarding the payroll and it provided some detail and I just at some point would like some more detail on this. Because I'm struggling to get my head around a couple of things. We've got two new positions for compliance for the Earn Sick and Save Time Leave, for the conversion therapy ban and for the Opportunity Housing Ordinance is what it's listed for. And just what I'm what I'm struggling with on that is we haven't enacted an Earn Sick and Save Time Leave policy. The conversion therapy ban, two things, there, from my recollection, there were only two providers within the city at the time we did the ban. And the state has come in and impact, put in place by executive order, their own ban on it. So why we don't just defer that to the state to enforce. And then we've been running with the Opportunity Housing Ordinance for a couple of years without having to have additional staff. So I'm struggling to understand, or maybe I just am asking, can I get more clarity on why we need two additional positions for the this enforcement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson, it's a great question. And this is where the budget is an exercise in forecasting as much as it is in, you know, responding to some other demands. So we do have, you're right, we do have the process going on right now for development of an Earn Sick and Save Leave ordinance that will be considered by the city council. And it's not presumed that that ordinance will pass. However, if it if it is approved by the council, there is going to be a compliance component of it that it will be necessary. And so as we have researched the issue and we've been sharing with the working group, the cities that have also implemented Earn Sick and Safe Leave thus far, all, they have varying degrees of of compliance staffing. And so looking at the number of businesses that we have, the 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 recommendation right now is that we would have two people doing compliance. We added those other issues in there because they are issues that do require some level of legal involvement. And you're right about the CT ban. If the if the state were indeed to step in and and similarly ban conversion therapy, then we would not need to do compliance in that case. But I, you know, we we don't know that that's going to be the case or it's even on the table right now. So we're presuming that the ordinance that we have in place will be up to us to enforce. And then with the other items that are there, the the more history that we have with like the opportunity housing and the terms that the the folks that we have done agreements with to provide those funds over time are also going to have compliance issues too. But the biggest driver is clearly the Earn Sick and Safe Leave ordinance. But the point of including those others is that we know they have compliance elements. Also, it was recently shared with you as part of our racial equity updates that we are working on contracting, city contracting. So things like disadvantaged business enterprises that if we have a program in that regard, that we would have compliance issues there as well. So this is a forecasting and the way that I would approach this, when we get down to adopting the budget, is we could, we could do this one of three ways. We could say that we're going to fund these for the whole year. Or we could say that there's likely to be, if the Earn Sick and Safe Leave Ordinance has adopted, some delayed effective date because there'll be a fair amount of education and information that'll be necessary for businesses. So I would anticipate maybe upwards of, you know, nine months to a year of an effective date for a policy like that. We would want to have compliance staff in place for about six months leading up to that because those would be the folks who would be primarily responsible for doing that type of education with the business community. So you could potentially fund these for half of the year in the first year. The third option is that we don't include them in our budget when it's adopted. We wait for the ordinance to be approved and then we would come back and make a budget amendment and identify where the funds may come from at that point. I would suggest that it would probably come for strategic priorities the first year. And then we would build that into our budget in subsequent years if that were indeed how the council did it. So it's those kind of flexibility options for how we approach this that, you know, we're hoping to work through with the council over the next several months.
Great. Appreciate that information. Just two more aspects to this one question on the staffing. So there's a part time HR position, then an accounting assistant portion, part of it is for payroll. And yet, from the information we got, we were down 23 staff members. We're adding back a few of them potentially in this. So can you clarify for me the need for additional HR and payroll staff when we have a smaller staff?
Sure. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson. One, we'll get into more specifics in the departmental reviews as we go through the budget season, you know, having more conversation with the council. What I would say for each of these positions is, yes, we had a headcount reduction. But that doesn't necessarily equate to workflow for our HR department because we have, you know, recruitments that are ongoing. And we've seen an increased number of recruitments. The the amount of staff time in HR hasn't necessarily been positively affected because we reduced by 23 FTE. And in accounting, we have one payroll accountant. And for an organization of 600 plus individuals on a bi weekly basis, that's a pretty significant challenge for one person and it it doesn't provide for a high level of confidence for, you know, contingencies if if something were to happen there. I think that what we're trying to do is protect the interests of the city in in the operation of our finance department and our payroll operation and recognizing that we need to have some additional capacity there. We also have, and we we also have the fire department is doing most of their payroll because they're paid on call. And they handle the payroll for almost all of the firefighters. If we are moving to a hybrid system, if we receive the federal grant for 18 new firefighters, a good amount of that payroll and perhaps all of it will be shifting over into the finance department. And so that's going to create an additional responsibility for the payroll accountant to have every every two weeks.
Great. And then my last part of the same question relates to the revenue side of a couple of these items. We have the, which is was mentioned by Kari, the grant coordinator and that we probably have some grant revenue. My assumption is there's not much reason to hire a grant coordinator unless they can generate at least as much as we pay them. If not some multiple of that, and how will we factor that into the budget? The other part of it is the public health specialist. I know we have a relationship with the Dyna and Richfield. And does this change any of the payment structure with them in terms of them providing some funding towards that position? Or is that an entirely Bloomington effort? So that that would be the part I would look at on those two.
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, that is something that we can get some more information for you on that on. For this initial look, we did not have any of those revenues as part of the budget request. So it's just the expense side. So we can look to see if there would be some additional revenues available.
I appreciate that. And having done many budgets, I understand sometimes it's much easier to figure out the expenses and then you kind of work back into the revenues of what it's going to take to support those functions and things like that. So just want to make sure that was on the radar, that we're focused on that in the budget too. So thank you for the answers. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Lowman and then Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll do three now. I've got several there later. Maybe I'll have different parts of my questions too. I like that one, Sean. So manager, mayor, one of the things that I kind of look at this in terms of just staffing generally. We talked a little bit about headcount. I don't want to get into the details. I'm not, I'm not an accountant. But what I'm trying to understand and what I want to be able to to be able to communicate to residents is when we look at our staffing, you know, a city of our size and population, you know, what do we typically see in other cities of our size? How much does it cost to do business? And there's, you know, there's, you know, there's several different ways to kind of kind of look at that that question, you know. You know, you could have a staff that's not paid well and they don't produce the type of quality product that's out there. So I'm not asking for that, the the minimum amount that's out there. And I know this is a is almost an impossible question to ask. And I also would would hope that you'd be able to opine a little bit on turnover ratios. And I know later down in your, in the slide presentation, you talked about that no other metro cities in the comparison group imposed similar wage freezes for 2021. But also when we look at those comparison cities, when we look at both their population, you know, tho- those aren't really comparable, you know, in terms of what we're at. So so I I hope that that's clear enough there to kind of give you something to work from. Because I just, I mean, when we look at how much we're paying for staffing, which is a large part of our our budget, help the, help me understand so I can explain that to the public.
Sure. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Lowman, I do understand what you're asking, right? So let's let's take it in a couple of pieces here. First of all, our staff represents about 70% of our total operations, right? So the the wages and benefits that we pay for the people who work for the city of Bloomington is about 70% of our total operating in the general fund. We, when we are comparing ourselves to other communities, and I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Lowman, about, you know, what the validity is of those comparisons, given the different services that cities choose to provide. But what we do is we try to look at what we call the cost of government. So it isn't just the property taxes that we will also look at the other services that that residents pay for. And so that's things like what's on their utility bill, right? It's the storm water and the sewer and the water bill. It's the cost for trash and recycling collection, which is also in It's the cost for trash and recycling collection, which is also in there. It's the cost for the franchise fees. And we tally all of those costs to get to what we say is the true cost of government. A couple of other interesting notes there is that we have a calculation in there for the cost of water softening because Bloomington famously has tremendous water. And not every community does. And not every community chooses to treat their water to the level that we do. And so they have very hard water. Residents in communities like that typically have water softeners and they have to pay for both the water softeners and the, you know, the softening salt and everything else. So we put all of those costs together. And this list of communities that Kari provided for you is the peer group that we tend to compare ourselves to. And we are annually at the bottom of that group. When you put the costs of the city tax paid for the median value home, the cost for utility fees, the cost for franchise fees and garbage collection. We are regularly at the bottom or the second from the bottom amongst those communities we compare ourselves to. We don't know what all of the cities are doing with all of those different service areas for 2022. So I can't show you that comparison. But we can produce that again. We showed it frequently during our budget process last year. And that's one that we can show again, just to reemphasize the value that Bloomington residents get for what they pay for their services, especially compared to peer communities.
I appreciate that. Cause I do think that oftentimes when we talk about this headcount and that kind of thing, I think sometimes that detail can get lost when you're, when you're doing a comparison. And so, and that's kind of the question that I'm always asking myself. Where do we, where do we rank with our cost of service that we provide when we compare that to, to other municipalities? And I think it's pretty clear. And when we, we get that out there, we'll see what that looks like again. I know we do that every year, but a lot of folks, because I look at that and I want to see what that costs. One other thing too, just as I move to my next question here, that I haven't seen too much in recent years is around fiscal disparities. And how, you know, we've been the number one payer of that fiscal disparities for many years running and how that impacts our budget. Kind of moving forward from how much money we contribute back to the general community because of our, our fiscal position. So you sort of took it a little bit here, kind of anticipated my other question here, which is around fees and taxes that residents can expect to pay. I like how what we have here in this initial look here in terms of if we isolate out the property value increase, which you talked about earlier, that if we kept it at zero, you'd still pay seven because your property value at the median value would increase. So what I want to understand though, is when we talk about those fees that are on that, do we have an understanding of, let's say we did do that 5%? I'm not saying that I would support a 5% increase, you know, I think it was 12 bucks. But if we take the, you know, take it down to that piece that you're now responsible for, if I add that fee on per month, what does that look like? We talk about solid waste. We talk about these other fees. Because sometimes what ends up happening is those dollars get hidden in the other, other, other buttons. And so what I thought I heard you say earlier was even when you add all of that up, we're still at the bottom of that. Is that still the case when we add the fees onto that? Help me understand that.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Lowman, it has been the case that with fees and city taxes, yes, we've been at the bottom or second to the bottom. Looking forward to 2022, I wouldn't be able to give you that, that estimate because I could only take what we know to be preliminary numbers for these other cities and plot those. And even that is a little bit of a, you know, difficult proposition to get accurate information. What we can do is show where we are this year and where we would be next year with that same group based on where all of them are for the, all of the, all of those cities are for this year, right? And so it wouldn't be a true reflection. We'd be a year ahead. But you'd still be able to see and then maybe project where some of these other cities are going to be because all of them are proposing, at least for preliminary levy, tax rates higher than the city of Bloomington.
Fair enough. And, and just for the fee piece of it though, if we were to add that on to that 5%, what would that look like for?
Oh, what, so what's the dollar value? No, that's okay. Kari, I'm sorry, right off the top of your head or do you have that handy?
I, I don't, I don't have that.
All right. So we can, we'll get the differential number for you and maybe we can even pull it before the end of the meeting.
Okay, that'd be great. And my last question then, Mayor, is so, you know, we, we talked about headcount earlier and we, we talked about the fees that we can expect to pay. And we know that there are differences between different cities and the different services that are provided by different cities. For a long time, we've had a model with, with respect to our fire department where we've had a model where we haven't had to pay as much as other cities have had to pay for fire services. And I, and I think that we need to level with our residents that how much that would cost. I know we've got the grant monies out there. And so what I would like to understand is, you know, we, we have a certain level and expectation around services. We're nationally known for our services here in the city of Bloomington. And I think our residents expect that, that level of service. And so when I look at the fire, fire staffing that we've got out there, I know we've got the three battalion that are out there and then the other staffing that we're looking to do with the, the paid on call piece where folks would be able to stay within the, the fire stations. We have that that's out there. And then we also have the risk if there is a downturn from a finance standpoint of our investment with respect to our contributions to our volunteer firefighters and, and pension piece. Can you help me, you know, can you opine a little bit on that in terms of, I know I asked you this question earlier last week, but I want to have a better understanding of that. If we were just to say, you know, we want to handle this fire thing and make the transition to be prepared, what's that number look like if we want to, want to push that forward in this year?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Lowman, regarding the fire pension question, and I appreciate Councilmember Lowman, you sharing that question in advance. For a little bit of history on this one, both for councilmembers who haven't been here for 10 years or more and for, and for folks who are watching. Back in 2010, the, the city had to make a significant contribution to the fire pension fund. We have to make a contribution every year, the way that the fire pension is set up. There's a fair amount of volatility in that number because some of it, some of our contribution depends on the fire state aid that comes to the city. And some of it depends on the market yield for investments in the fire pension fund on an annual basis. And that we have to be at a certain amount of yield before or, or to avoid paying in or paying additional amount, right? So back in 2010, the conditions were such that there was a significant payment that had to be made. And the city actually had to issue debt, five-year debt to meet those fire pension commitments. In 2016, we created a fire pension fund with the specific intent of making sure that we could manage that volatility with, with less impact to the property taxpayer on an annual basis. So the fire pension fund is in good shape right now. For the 2022 budget, we're only going to be obligated to send the pass-through money from the state since the investments at year-end last year, 2020, did so well. So we're estimating to end 2022 with a working capital balance of about $6.5 million in a fire pension fund. And we're modeling out an average $2.5 million of obligation payments in future years. And, and that does include gradual property tax support for that fire pension fund. That's not going to change. But what you're not going to see are the spikes and the valleys from year to year. So the fire pension fund is in good shape.
And thanks for that. But for those years we were hit, can we just let people know how much that was? Because that was a significant amount of debt. I think it was over, was it over two years, over three years, if I'm remembering correctly? And I just, I think people need to know what that number is as, as we kind of set ourselves up. Because if there is a downturn, there is a risk associated with that. And I think we can't, you know, if we're looking to try to make sure we're fully funding our, our, our police department moving forward, the high level of service we expect, and then we have a downturn, there's going to be an impact. And, and I think as we look at that, that stabilization that we're trying to put in there, that's yet another risk if that also comes. So I just, you know, I want to talk about those numbers and have a conversation about that here. Okay?
And Councilmember Lowman, that's, that's, it's a good question. That if we were to have, I think, a number of years of poor yield, then we would certainly be in more difficult position. I think if we have one down year, we're fine. And, you know, the way the market is, it's usually up and down, up and down. If we have a sustained period of, of underperforming years, then, then yeah, we may have an issue. And so I think it's a good thing to have on the radar screen when we're talking about sustainability.
Do we have that number at all?
The, the amount from 2010?
Yeah. Cause I, I was, it was the first year we got hit and then there was, I thought there was a second year.
Okay. We will have that before the end of the meeting. Yep.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, just a, a few quick one-part questions because that's all I'm really capable of handling. Just to, to make sure I understand this correctly, for a, a 3% levy increase that would put us roughly $277,000 in the black. And a flat levy would have us roughly 1.7 million in, in the red. So my, my, just to make sure I understand this correctly, the gap we're looking at between that 3% levy increase and the flat levy would be roughly $3 million. Am I correct on those numbers? It's like 2.977 or something like that?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Coulter, yes, roughly.
And then, Kari, maybe, maybe I just missed it. Do you, do you have a graphic like this for?
Actually, I'm sorry. It's about 2.4 million or $2 million, right? Kari, yeah, our gap is 1.7 and then 277 and it's clear. So it's about $2 million.
I'm going to go back to that slide.
Oh, yes. I know how to do math. Yes, no, you're.
It's a lot of numbers on budget night. It's okay, Councilmember Coulter.
So.
There it is.
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Coulter, the, the total amount like where it has the use of tax stabilization, that's the 2.8 million. But we were planning to use 1.1 million of that from strategic priorities for tax stabilization. So then the funding gap is the 1.7 million.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. I just, I just, yes, my math error aside, I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. And then backing up there, you had that, that graphic for the, for 22, 23. Do you have that for? Or I'm sorry, you had 23, 24. Do you have that for 22, 23 as well?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Okay. So the, the that, the, the tax levy support for the Gulf, for the Gulf piece, that I am correct in understanding that that, that assumes continued operation of Highland Greens by Three Rivers, correct?
Uh, yes, that is, that is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. And then the, this, okay. And then actually my second question was answered right there. That does include the 1, 1.5% for debt service. And then my, my last question really is, you know, I recall last year, the Budget Advisory Committee, you know, they went through and they made their recommendations and that, that whole long list of essentially bud, potential budget cuts. And so I guess my, my question is how much of that list, you know, knowing where it was and, and what the recommendations were, how much of that list would still, that's more of a future question, how much of that list would still be offerable? How many of the things on that list of potential cuts could potentially be enacted for next year as well? And then my point in bringing that up is I think, you know, my, my approach with this is, you know, we had agreed at, at this, that, you know, that, that flat levy, this 0% levy would conceptually be where we started for this year. And so what I would like to see is essentially us saying, you know, that's where, that's where we said we were going to start here. Why can't we do this? What, you know, using that, using that list and, and the other information that we have, what, I mean, obviously we can do it. It's just a question of, of, you know, the, the priorities we set and so on. But using, using that list, using that information, this, this would be the result of going with a, a flat levy as opposed to a 3% levy increase. Does that, I hope that jumble of words makes sense because I'm not sure I can repeat it. Cause I, I mean, I, I think at the end of the day, you know, that's, that's the conversation we need to be talking about. This is, is this the first time this year I'm going to use the line? Budget decisions are policy decisions? That, you know, the, the policy decisions that we are making by the budget choices, what are the policy ramifications of the potential budget decisions we would be making in terms of the effect they would have on city services and, and programs and things like that? So that was a really long way of, of saying that. I think that was it for me.
Okay. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Coulter, the jumble made sense. So let's see if I can make sense of the jumble in replying. First, let me, let me make a couple of clarifications. I, I think it's clear, but I, I don't want to presume anything. The, the things that were in the presentation that Kari walked through, especially those three drivers, you know, the staffing additions, the fire department staffing issues, those are not considered done deals, right? The, the only one I would say of that, those three drivers are the, are the salary changes as a result of the action in June and the carry-through, right? So you've got about $2 million of the increases there that are not presumed. Okay. They're in here for the purposes of forecasting what the budget is based on the needs as we've identified them. On the 2023 chart that Kari had been showing, that 3.81% also has debt service of 1.5%. If folks weren't paying attention to a council meeting two weeks ago, there, you know, they wouldn't know what that discussion was about. But we were trying to model what it would take over the series of about 10 years to address the necessary infrastructure replacement and rehabilitation in our capital improvement plan. And so that one and a half percent of debt service is what we had conceptually talked about. So somebody should not look at this and say that is presumed either. And those are both, those are both policy issues that the council's going to have to decide at a future date. So we'll put that on there because we know it's on the council's radar screen. Okay? So having said that, your question about the Community Budget Advisory Committee process last year and the list of potential reductions, the SEBAC had tiered those recommendations. And many of the first tier reductions were the ones that ultimately were accepted and approved by the city council. Presumably because the tier two and tier three reductions were more onerous than the council thought the community was willing to accept in terms of a reduction of services. So we have not revisited that list as we've gone through this process. If that's something that council would like us to do, we can certainly do that. You asked, are those things still possible? I'm trying to think of something on that list that we have stopped doing and I don't think there is. So if we were to go back to that list, my guess is that most of them would be potential reductions that we could evaluate. And if part of that exercise is, to your point of, you know, budget decisions or policy decisions is, is weighing what's more important, then we can certainly do that exercise over the course of the next couple of months.
Thank you. And I, I think just to sort of close, close the loop on that, what I, I think you responded to that in, in the way that I, I would have expected and I, I think what I'm, what I'm getting at is just what is the, sort of the full range of options that we have in terms of the budget decisions that we, we will be facing this year. So I think, I think that, that is clear. So thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick ones. This first one, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm reading this graph here. So the 2023 tax levy, are we anticipating levying an additional $500,000 to contribute into the strategic priorities fund?
Yes, uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmembers, Councilmember Martin, that is what I have, and this is just a very preliminary look at what is possible with our, um, current projections, but that is what is projected in the strategic priorities long-term model, starting in 2023 and every year doing 500,000. And that was one thing that we did have, um, previously in the tax levy, and that was something that went away in the 2021 budget and the 22 budget.
Gotcha. I get, do you know, just kind of ballpark, what we'd be anticipating on transferring out of strategic priorities for stack tax levy stabilization? I'm speculating what's coming in, what's coming out.
Yes. Um, Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Martin, it, we are, um, showing 1.1 million dollars each year. So, uh, for 23, 24, 25.
Okay. Gotcha. All the way through. So then out to 25, then kind of my second question, if we were to front load some of that funding, um, anticipating the recovery to Councilmember Carter's point, happens a little bit faster, and the model is exactly what we're projecting now, if we moved half a million dollars out of that final year up ahead, we would be half a million dollars short in 2025, if everything is perfectly what we're guessing now?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember, Councilmember Martin, I'm not sure if I quite understand for the, for the model, if we, so are you saying if we had $500,000, um, if we took that out in one of the years?
Yeah.
And not have it be part of the strategic?
Yeah. Just, just how much if we wanted to front load some of that strategic priorities to pick up expenses now and the recovery ends up taking just as long as staff thinks? I'm just thinking, okay, how much are we going to have to scramble then in 2025 to make up the difference? Okay. That makes sense. Uh, thank you. Yeah. I've, I've got some just kind of general thoughts to share in, in a little bit here, but that's my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Uh, Councilmember Beloga, get you in just a second. I just wanted to follow up on a, a question or the, the statement by Councilmember Colter. There's, this notion of budget decisions, policy decisions, uh, how they go hand in hand. Is it safe to say, so our, our, our ranking, the lowest among our peer communities, which was obviously a policy and budget decision for a number of years, that was, that was the goal, to keep things as low as possible. But, um, now to, to look at the ramifications of that, as I look at this necessary debt services, we've talked about the needs that we have in our facilities and our buildings and, and, um, are, are just our infrastructure here in town. I think that's a good example of yes, policy and budget decisions go hand in hand, and there are long-term ramifications to that. I mean, is, is that a safe, uh, a safe assumption, a, a correct thing to say?
Uh, yes, Mayor, Councilmembers, um, that, that is a safe thing to say. That has been a policy of Bloomington.
So I, I think we need to keep that in mind as we kind of look at this, not just in the here and now, but in the future as well, because I, I appreciate the, uh, the decisions that were made in the past, but now we're, we're, we're dealing with that currently with the, uh, this need for reinvestment in infrastructure. Also on, uh, Councilmember, um, Colter's statements, um, he brought it up and actually I was going to bring it up as well, this list by the, um, Community Budget Advisory Committee from last year, and I will use it for the first time this year, the notion of a stop doing list. And, um, as we look at a number of issues where we're going to, um, perhaps put on, bring on new staff or, or take on new responsibilities, whether it's, um, you know, conversion therapy or unsafe and sick and that kind of thing. I do think, and I agree fully with Councilmember Colter, I want to make sure that we have all options on the table to look back at that stop doing list and are there options there that we can, that we can follow up on? I think we've had, um, you know, Highland Greens was a, a wonderful example of that working, that notion working where we, uh, that, that's been removed from, from city responsibility and ultimately from the city budgeting requirements, but we still have golf and, at, at Highland Greens. And I think we need to look at options or different ways that we might want to consider that as well, ways that we could, uh, replicate that in some way that we could, uh, have that stop doing list, um, to creatively use that to stop something, but in a way continue that, that service here in the city of Bloomington. So just one thing to, to consider and think about as we move forward.
And Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I appreciate that, um, suggestion. And, you know, one of the things that we can do over the next couple of months is highlight, uh, some places where we are seeing that, uh, maybe it's not a conscious decision to stop doing a certain service, but there have been, uh, a number of changes in our operations over the last couple of years that are yielding benefits. One that immediately comes to mind is in our fleet service. And you'll remember, we had an assessment done of the fleet service. One of the things they identified was what was referred to as the shadow fleet, right? The number of vehicles that just sort of, uh, get passed down and get assumed rather than getting phased out. Um, we have over the last three, four years, uh, actually reduced that shadow fleet by about 60 vehicles. Was that the number, Kari? Um, so that's about 10% of the fleet that, um, through, uh, proactive management, uh, and changing the way that we do things, uh, has specifically yielded positive financial results. Um, we can share more about that.
And I think that would be appreciated. Thank you. Councilmember Beloga.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I think my last question, just to make, uh, double sure is, is, uh, we talked about the increase in valuation, lower, mid, higher range. So, uh, I want to jump off on that point. Uh, so one of the impacts along with that, uh, that we have not talked about is, is what our independent school district is planning for levy increases in Hennepin County. Um, Kari, you must have, uh, a peek in the, uh, tent on that, and can you share that with us?
Um, Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Beloga, I do not have that information yet. I don't know if City Manager Jamie Brugge does.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I have not had information from the school district. Um, I, I did talk to our, uh, county commissioner for our district, who also happens to be the budget chair for the county board. And, uh, Commissioner Gotel did not suggest a specific number. They're still working their way through that, leading up to the preliminary levy. Um, but I, based on what she said, I expect it's probably going to be, uh, in the two to three percent range. Um, they were at zero percent last year, uh, and they are looking at a, a nominal increase this year.
If we can have that, uh, as soon as it's available, that would be helpful.
Certainly.
Because of course, uh, it's, uh, you know, the other two legs of the three-legged stool that affect our tax base. So, uh, thanks for that information as it becomes available. We, we talked about, uh, increases and it's about a million dollars, 982,000 if I recall, which is, uh, increases of pay for, uh, city staff. But what percentage are we forecasting, uh, for increases to staff for 2022?
Uh, Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Beloga, uh, those increases, um, some of that has already been, um, right, I might have to look to Assistant City, City Manager Chris Wilson, if that's in that 2022 contract for dispatch, or is it just, um, 21 they have?
The settled and signed union contract with dispatch is actually a three-year contract covering 21, 22, and 23. And, um, it provides a three percent increase in 2022.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, um, that is the, what we know for sure, um, that's been contracted for dispatch. So based on that, that's what's been projected for the rest of the salaries. Um, there's also some employees that are eligible for step increases, and so, um, those have also been, uh, projected out as well.
I understand. But, uh, yes, some assumed rate is, is three percent and that's based upon, um, as, as we all heard, the one contract that has been negotiated, which will affect 2022.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. Um, one of the, uh, and, and, uh, Councilmember Loman, uh, started this, touched on it, and I just want to, uh, get a little more specific detail on it. Uh, we're really changing models of fire protection within the city of Bloomington. Uh, at one time, uh, not all that long ago, we were fully on-call, and we're really moving to, uh, a hybrid model. And I think what we can see is, is, uh, at some point in time, moving more to a full-time staffing model. Um, and, and to do that and accommodate, uh, that kind of a hybrid model where we're going to have people, uh, living in, uh, the fire stations, that's one of the reasons that's prompting the replacement of those fire stations. And I think what we really need to do is, is show what those costs are year by year by year, because, uh, we're kind of taking a small bite of the apple at each increment. But, uh, the total cost through time is, uh, I think is going to be rather astounding to our residents. Um, and we haven't displayed that in any way, shape, or form so that they can really see that. So I would take what our, uh, fire protection costs were within the public safety spending for, uh, pick a year, the year 2000, and, you know, project that out over 10 years and show what those costs are most reasonably going to be. Because as we add more full-time staff, we're adding additional fire pension cost, uh, greater than we would through on-call, just because, um, you know, it just works that way because it goes on a basis of salary. Um, and, and then, and, and I don't expect that you have this information. I think that, uh, the fire chief would need to find on it. But, uh, going to on-call duty crews, you know, the $1 million that's proposed, will that, while that may solve a, a problem of getting the rig out the door with, uh, a greater number of people today, will, what will that do to retention and, um, uh, recruitment of new part-time firefighters? I would, uh, guess that, you know, since we'll be asking those people, uh, to make a block time commitment, which they haven't done other than for fighting fires, uh, that that may hurt recruitment and hasten, uh, the transition and would like this, you know, hear what Chief Seal has to say about that and boil it into that projection that we're, uh, asking for here. Does, does, uh, what I say seem doable by the next, uh, council meeting? And, uh, did you have any questions, uh, of what I'm asking for?
Sure. Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, Councilmember Beloga, uh, actually what you're asking for is, uh, crystal clear, and it makes a lot of sense. I think you're right to identify the fact that we do have a number of different, uh, budgeting dynamics related to our fire department, uh, operating model that are coming together. Uh, it's an excellent point that you make, and I appreciate you making it, that, uh, one of the drivers in the need to replace our, uh, fire stations, which are, you know, between 45 to 50 years old, is that they don't have adequate living quarters as we start to transition into, uh, having, uh, firefighters, uh, stationed in those, um, locations, uh, as, as part of their job. And, uh, secondarily, that the, you know, the apparatus today is just much bigger than it was 50 years ago. And so the, the stations are, uh, approaching functional obsolescence. On the, the forecasting of the staffing models, uh, looking out, uh, we can certainly do that. And I think that we could have Chief Seal on the agenda, either on September 13th or September 20th, to provide, uh, more detail on that. Um, he, he will be able to provide, uh, a much more informed view. Uh, I will tell you from my perspective, having managed a, a couple of communities where we have paid-on-call firefighters, um, it's a little bit of, uh, of both. Your, your point about, um, making it potentially harder to recruit or retain because of the expectation of, uh, working a certain number of hours in a month, um, actually cuts both ways, because there are a number of firefighters who are looking to pick up hours that are on a regular basis, and then they're going to be paid on a regular basis. Uh, so based on the experience I've seen, that, um, the, the duty crew model, uh, doesn't necessarily have a, um, a, uh, negative effect on recruit or on retention. Um, it, it might on the recruitment piece to know that there's an expectation of a certain number of hours worked in a given month. So that's, um, some information that we can share, uh, coming up at a subsequent meeting.
And, uh, you know, include it in there if we can do the debt service and all of it, so that, uh, we can really look at an isolated profile of what, uh, our fire services have cost us traditionally and what they, uh, are going to be migrating towards. Cause I think, you know, when we look at some of the, like the 2023 tax levy model, uh, if we're going to need to, and it's, uh, based solely upon what the, the chief produces, but, uh, if his model shows, uh, a real high acceleration in making that transition from, uh, on-call to, uh, either a hybrid or a full-time, uh, that will help us verify what that, uh, pressure will be on the, uh, total general fund, uh, requirements. And, if, if the fire is going to, uh, consume two points of the 3.81 in 2024, uh, you know, gives us a different measuring stick to, uh, verify how accurate and trustworthy this kind of projection is going forward.
Council, uh, hold on, Councilmember, Mr. Brue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Beloga. Uh, I, I neglected to address your points about the fire pension, uh, which are good, uh, points as well, and allows me to come back to Councilmember Loman's, uh, question earlier. Back in 2007, 2008, and 2009, the city didn't make any contribution to the fire pension, just because of the way the market was performing. And then in 2010, it was 3.2 million dollars. And then the next year, it was 3.1 million dollars, and then it was 1.8 and 1.9. Uh, so there was a, and then 2.7. So that next five-year period, um, this is the volatility we were talking about, was, uh, let me do my math real quickly, 8.110. So about $13 million, uh, over a five-year period, um, because of the, the market conditions. And that's why it was that specific, uh, reason that we established the fire pension fund was to avoid that type of, of volatility. Your point, Councilmember Beloga, about the new firefighters, uh, um, potentially making the fire pension, uh, issue more challenging, if we, uh, receive the SAFER grant, those 18 full-time firefighters will have their pensions provided through the Para Police and Fire Pension Fund. That is not an obligation that we will have through this managed pension fund. It's an obligation that comes through the wage and benefit package for those employees, uh, that we contribute to the pension on a bi-weekly basis.
Uh, thank you. I didn't, uh, didn't recall that. I appreciate that information. So, uh, and I suspect that the next go-around, we're going to have the spending profile by department so that we can see, uh, you know, who's going up, who's going down, who's staying basically flat, that type of thing. Uh, cause I think, uh, the community will be quite interested in public safety and what's happening there. Um, and same with the revenue budget, which has already been asked for and addressed. So, um, I think that, uh, I, I've got a couple more items, but I'm monopolizing time here, so I'm going to give the mic up for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga. And your points about the fire department are, again, back to the points of budget decisions being policy decisions. And, and city councils before us decided that Bloomington would not have a, a full-time fire department and made that decision, um, for a number of years. And now here we are, a city of 90,000 people, and we're faced with the, with the prospect of trying to figure out how to best provide fire protection to our, our community of 90,000 people. And we're faced with this as a, as not only a, a policy question, but a budget challenge that we're going to have to, to deal with. as not only a policy question, but a budget challenge that we're going to have to to deal with over the next, you know, the next generation. So interesting questions. Councilmember Loman.
Well, Mayor, I'll pick it right up where you you left it there. And I think there's a number of risks out there. I know that, you know, the city manager was able to to talk about that thirteen million dollars plus. There's, you know, water, my colleague, Beloga, and also Councilmember Carter mentioned a few items, you know, we got dispatch, there's water that's out there. So and and you talked about it too, and I and I, so I want to kind of, this is more of a question for you, Mayor. In terms of, you know, we've got this paradigm shift, you know, we've got a number of items where we we've done it, you know, for a long period of time. We have, you know, from a fee standpoint and from a tax standpoint, really had a paradigm here in this city of driving those rates down, and we've been, we've achieved that. There's been some consequences from doing that from an infrastructure standpoint. And really what I, really what my question is for you is that, you know, given your experience working with Chamber and working with businesses, we just saw the survey that when we defer these infrastructural things, there's an impact to the economy and the ability for the city to grow. And so I wonder if you would, you know, care to opine a little bit about this, you know, a paradigm shift and what that looks like from a taxpayer standpoint, not only for the businesses and also for residents generally as we, you know, what what's the, you know, what's the new model that we're we're looking to try to aim for? Especially for those folks who are economically challenged as, you know, we go and knock on those doors. How are we going to make sure that they're included in in this this picture as we looked, because there are costs, you know, by by deferring and and not doing things. And so that that's where I'm trying to have a better understanding of kind of what that paradigm shift means.
And thank you, Member, Councilmember Loman. And I agree. I mean, things are are changing, and I think in a lot of ways, changes are being forced upon us in, for example, in in the world of fire protection. It's it's being forced upon us. I don't think I don't believe that non-action is an is an option here. We're going to have to do something about our the the size of our fire departments, the size of our fire department, and the number of firefighters, the number of firefighters on a rig when they roll out of the station. We need to do something about that. For our facilities, it becomes a question of how attractive does this community want to be to people as they're choosing where they want to live? Whether it's whether it's young families looking for parks or playgrounds or activity opportunities for their kids to retirees who are looking for a place to live, all these different questions and everything in between. We need to decide, again, from a policy perspective, where we want to be and and whether or not this is something we can make decisions on, or whether or not it's being forced upon us, that we're going to have to respond one way or another. And I'm glad you brought it up in the way that you did, because one of the things that I still have on my list to talk about and to ask about is engagement. And I know that Ms. Carlson had presented an engagement plan regarding this this upcoming budget season. And I I think as we move into this, as we frame up this discussion tonight and start to look ahead to the next few meetings in the next couple of months, the engagement in all of this is going to be just vitally important. And I would I would look to you, I'd look to you, Mr. Verbrugge, I would look to our our community outreach and engagement, I'd look to all of us to try and figure out the best way that we can engage the community in this discussion. Because there are some profound shifts ahead of us that that we're going to have to to decide on and figure out whether or not we want to make those changes. As we as we move forward, as I keep saying, into the next generation, for the next generation or generations of people who live in the city of Bloomington are going to be impacted by this discussion. Whether we decide to to put off these decisions, these investments further into the future, I won't say kick the can down the road because that's pejorative, I won't say that. But if we want to hold off on making those decisions, and then how it impacts the city of Bloomington long-term in terms of public safety, in terms of amenities, in terms of a place that people want to live. So I I would look to to you and Ms. Carlson, I'd look to you, Mr. Verbrugge, talk more if you could about the the engagement plan. I know that is in place, and I know that you've talked about in in your in your meetings.
So, Mayor, councilmembers, we do have plans in October. Hopefully, we would, we'd like to do another virtual event and an in-person event, hopefully, but we'll be working with the council on and on what you would like the community to engage on, what what decisions you're looking at, what you want their input on. So we'll work with you to find out what because an important part of getting the community engaged and getting their input is so they understand how we're going to use it. So if they're just going to use it as a, you know, in a consulting type of role, or how they're going to be able to impact decisions, we'll have to be made very clear to them and then come back to them and let them know why the decisions were made. So as we work through the budget, if there's certain things that the council is would like the community's input on, we'll want to identify those, and then we'll use that to develop those events. And we'll also, of course, have that information out on Let's Talk Bloomington. We'll have a budget section on our website that people can, there are specific questions that we want to get from the community, we can ask them there. And also put it on, we have a brand-new budget page on the city's website that you can get right from the homepage. This presentation will be out there. All the information about the budget is going to be there, so we can advertise that for the community as well.
Thank you. And I would think that to Councilmember Beloga's point, that the more information, especially on big-ticket items, the fired, the the changes in fire are going to be a big-ticket item. The more information we have on that to be able to share and to to make part of the discussion, absolutely the better. The one, the the strongest part, I think, of the Community Budget Advisory Committee last year was the amount of information produced and disseminated. And that is still there on the website for people to to dig through if they want to dig through it. And I think we've just got to be as upfront as possible and provide all the information and make the make a part of this this part of the discussion, part of the conversation as we head on to the community and engage with them on this. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor, and I absolutely agree with you. It actually made me think, I mean, some of these really tough conversations and big decisions we have to make are, you know, they will have impacts for many years. And so I'm just wondering, will some of these kind of larger questions and decisions be discussed in the community-based strategic planning? And then how will that impact this year's budget discussions? And then ongoing kind of future? Because I I understand the strategic planning is kind of visionary, but I think that this kind of larger question around, like, our our framework around how we make decisions and the type of community that we want to have is really wrapped up into that, in that strategic planning process and and kind of community visioning, so.
Agreed, and that's a good question. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Carter. This year's budget process will wrap up by the time that the community strategic planning process basically starts. The core plan will meet, the core planning team will meet for the first time in December. It will certainly inform future budget discussions. I would say that you know, what the outcome of that process will have an effect, whether it's a significant effect is going to be up to the council, that it's really going to be up to this group to decide how much you want to invest in the recommendations coming out of the of the strategic planning process. And I I'm just being cautious here because you know, we're running a sixty-million-dollar general fund here, right? And actually, more than that. I mean, our levy is sixty-six million dollars, but our general fund and budget is in the neighborhood of eighty million dollars. So I I don't think that you're going to see something coming out of a strategic planning process that is going to have even like a ten percent impact, because I think eight million dollars would be a tremendous commitment to a strategic direction in one or a couple of years. But it will have an effect, right? And so I think trying to figure out what that is is going to be really important for us as we go through future budget processes. For this year, I I think it's the things that the council has already committed to that are consistent with the strategic plan that we've been working under already. You know, those issues where we've invested in equity and inclusion, where we've invested in community image, where we've invested in community amenities, and where certainly we've invested a lot in, you know, focused renewal, right? And so the the amount of effort and the amount of resources that we're putting into making sure that areas of the community that have been lacking investment over a number of years are seeing the council's commitment, that's not going to change. And I don't think it'll necessarily change after next year either. So, yes, the process will be informed by the strategic planning, and it'll be informed to a level the council decides is appropriate. But much of what you're seeing in the budget here, and you'll continue to see, are, one, the combination of basic services, and, two, the continuation of effort in those high-priority areas that the council's already identified.
Council, additional questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Beloga.
Not a question, but I'm anticipating that we're all going to get a number of queries on golf. And so I thought if we address it here, that would decrease the flow of emails to us. And when, the the first question would probably be, well, I I thought we got rid of Highland Greens, so that does that mean that Dwan is now losing money and needing public subsidy? And the answer is no, that is not the case, but we are carrying forward a negative fund balance for Highland. And I believe, and the question then is to carry is, is that this is an amount which continues to pay down that negative balance until some point in the future, and when do we anticipate that to be fully paid?
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Beloga. What we're projecting for twenty-two and twenty-three for the tax levy, that is correct, there is one fund for golf that incorporated both Dwan and Highland. And over many years, Highland was not was losing money. And so what we would like to have is a working capital balance, and that fund is not where it is, where it should be right now. It's a lot lower than what the goal is for that fund. So we would like to continue to have tax levy support to get that back to where it needed to be. And so now that we're just looking at it as the golf fund, basically just for for Dwan, we will bring that to the council and show long-term where we, how that looks. And I don't have that information right here, but I can get that information to you, and we will bring the golf fund individually to the council to look at that. So what's here, just preliminary, will still need to be decided by the council based on information we have.
Thank you.
Council, any additional questions? Comments? As I said at the outset, this is, this was, this is basically a study meeting. We're we're getting information, no decisions made tonight. We're we're just chewing things up and offering comments, and staff will take them back, and we'll continue this conversation. So, Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real briefly, because as this conversation continues, it's kind of been mentioned around the edges before, but just to, I don't know, bake it into future conversations. I guess I I'm curious going forward, things like the funding for first year in the new racial equity position, expansion of the existing position, the work that's going on there, the compliance stuff, as Councilmember Nelson asked about, and and as we learned, that is a little bit TBD on what that looks like, depending on state, a lot of factors. But considering that that's such a direct outcome of some very clear strategic initiatives put forward by this council, I think that falls very squarely into strategic priorities. I I would look at that not so much as including those costs in expanded movement of funds out of strategic priorities into general fund off offset levy, so much as us saying to the community, we have heard you, we see these as big strategic initiatives, and out of the funds that we set aside for strategic priorities as a council, we're going to fund the first-year cost for this to get the kinks worked out, to figure out what it's going to be to stand this all up. And then once it's up and running, moving that kind of as as we would see here, as an assumption, general fund to begin with. So obviously, that that stuff would live in the general fund, but I I would see viewing that as it lives right here, three-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-some-odd dollars. I I would see that as just being, if this is a strategic priority of the council, I don't think that's front-running tax levy stabilization. I'd say that's, we should just pay those first-year costs out of strategic priorities regardless. So just just something to chew on a little bit moving forward.
Interesting thought. Thank you. Mr. Verbrugge.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I have a piece of information that we said we'd try to get by the end of the meeting. I can share my screen if Chris would make me a presenter. Let's see if we're going to be able to do this. Councilmember Loman's the one who asked for it, and I know he had to step away here for a second, so we'll at least have it on tape. Am I good to go?
You should.
Okay. Let's see if this is going to work. Nope. Hang on. I just, I pushed a wrong button there, I think, Chris.
Things were going so well.
They were. After running into these once every meeting, so share screen. Screen broadcast, is that what I, well? Okay, it's not working. So I will share with it, share with you verbally. On the fees, the the most recent one we have for twenty-twenty-one has all-in for Bloomington on the single-family property taxes, the monthly cost for water and sewer charges. The franchise fees is a hundred-and-fifty, I got to adjust because the franchise fees were approved for a council to go up here. So it's about a hundred-and-fifty-four dollars a month. The next closest city is Eden Prairie at one-sixty-nine, Plymouth at one-seventy-five, Minneapolis at two-oh-six, Brooklyn Park, two-oh-eight, Richfield, two-fifteen, St. Louis Park, two-sixteen, Minnetoka, two-seventeen, Edina, two-twenty-nine. So of those, two, four, six, eight, nine communities, Bloomington is the the least of them on the all-in cost by about fifteen dollars a month.
And I'm sure you'll share that with everyone.
We will.
Very good. Thank you. All right, Council, anything else to add? Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one sort of last thought here. You know, we we talked a little bit, sort of tinkered around the edges of the, excuse me, the discussion around compliance on on some of the things that that we have done or or may do moving forward. And I think, you know, it it just bears, it it's worth stating that, you know, some of the things that I certainly have talked about, and and I know others on the council have as well, will, I mean, they they have that compliance component to them in terms of enforcement, in terms of making sure we're getting the outcomes that we would like to see for the community. And so I think, you know, in in a sort of a similar vein to some of the other things that we've talked about, that we may need to have a more serious discussion about the nature of compliance and enforcement and how, what that looks like from the side of of the city in in terms of what the city does for that kind of thing, because based on what I've seen and what I've heard, you know, my my colleagues talk about, I am, I would suspect that that need for compliance is only going to increase moving forward, that that we are, it's unlikely that we will, we'll say, you know, we're going to step back a little bit and and not enforce, we're enforce fewer things and and do fewer things and ask staff to do less in the future. So I'm, I think that's, that's going to be a really important piece moving forward that I think we're going to have to have a conversation about at some point.
Thank you, Councilmember. Seeing nothing else, nothing else? Ms. Carlson, thank you so very much. Mr. Verbrugge, thanks for the presentation. I appreciate it. We've got a lot to think about, so thank you. We're going to move on on our agenda to item two-point-two, which is the City Manager and Council Updates. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Not necessarily an issues update, so much as this is a staffing update. As the council is aware, we're losing our Assistant City Manager. Chris Wilson is going to be leaving us at the end of this week. This is her last council meeting before she goes to be the city administrator in the city of Inver Grove Heights. And I want to take this opportunity to just publicly acknowledge the work that Chris has done over the last six years on behalf of the residents and businesses and visitors of Bloomington and the service that she has provided to her coworkers here. of Bloomington, and the service that she has provided to her coworkers here in her role, first as the Human Resources Director, and then subsequently as the Assistant City Manager for the last three years, and her service to the city council as well. Chris is a consummate professional. We were very fortunate to be able to hire her six years ago, and at the time that we did, she was more than ready to be a city manager back then, and we are grateful for the six years of fantastic leadership that she's provided here. And we're going to miss her, but we know she's going to do bigger and better things at Inver Grove Heights, and so we'll be cheering her on from afar. And have an announcement shortly about a replacement, so that council and staff will know that continuity of effort will be maintained here, and we'll share that with folks in the not-too-distant future. But for tonight, I want to make sure that it's about recognizing Chris and appreciating her, and letting everybody know that there are a lot of people in this organization who do their work without getting a lot of fanfare or a lot of time in front of the council. And, you know, those are the folks who make this organization go, and Chris is one of those people who is an absolute rock star in this business, and we're really fortunate to be able to work with her for the last six years. Thank you.
Couldn't agree more. Chris, thank you so very much for the past six years. You've been fantastic to work with and greatly appreciated. I told her earlier this week, and I mentioned it to Jamie also, I think one of the reasons why Bloomington made it through the pandemic so effectively and so well is because that in addition to Jamie, we have two or three other people on this staff who would be outstanding city managers, and Chris was certainly one of them. And her work, just guiding us, helping us through the whole pandemic, taking over the city clerk's office and the elections right before the 2020 election, and holding that all together and having it go off without a hitch in an enormous turnout election in 2020, I think is just, was so incredibly impressive, and so very thankful for that. You did a great job, so thank you so very much. Our losses, the gain of Inver Grove Heights, they're lucky to have you, and we were lucky to have you for the last six years, so thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Verbrugge, anything else? Counsel, anything for the updates this evening? Councilmember Lohman?
I just wanted to say one thing about Chris's service to the city of Bloomington, and I just wanted to say, Mayor, certainly I think all the things you said are perfect, but I wanted to just say how much I appreciate her passion for the work that you did here at the city, for the residents. And I hope that you'll carry that forward in the initiatives, I know you're passionate about here, that you'll be able to carry those same passions to where you go. I'm going to miss you, but hey, they're getting a great person. So again, I hope you continue to have that passion as you, as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I echo the sentiments that have been shared already, Chris, and as I shared with you in my email, definitely going to miss you, but also a huge congratulations. I mean, it's really, really significant and obviously well-deserved, and so thank you. And then the other thing I just wanted to ask for, or see if we could, I was going to see if we could have a presentation on the census results for Bloomington. I think, you know, a lot of time and effort went into getting the results that we got in Bloomington in terms of turnout or participation in the census, and so any kind of the high-level updates would be appreciated, and then any impacts that might have, what, I don't know how, exactly how like state aid is calculated, or things like that, if it's per person, but any kind of, kind of impacts from the increased numbers that we see of people living here.
Absolutely. Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Carter, that's a good idea. We didn't have anybody who was census man running around this community. I don't know if you saw the article in the Star Tribune over the weekend, there's an elected official in a northern St. Paul suburb that donned a costume, a census man, trying to drive his community to a complete count. But despite having a lack of a superhero running around here, we actually achieved pretty great things. Our Complete Count Committee did a fantastic job driving response, and it was one of the highest responses around again. So, that's really good for the city of Bloomington, and we'll put it on our meeting tomorrow morning to figure out which agenda will get an update for you.
I was surprised in that article, the cutoff of a population of 5,000, what an enormous economic difference that makes for communities. So, yes, every, every nose counted counts, so. Counsel, anything else? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Carter to adjourn this evening's meeting, hearing no further discussion. Mr. Brillhart?
Beloga?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Don't we have like two more hours? I guess I would.
And Mayor Bussie.
Aye, motion carries 7-0, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for tuning in this evening. Thank you to the council for your work on this evening, and thanks to Ms. Carlson, great budget presentation, thank you so very much. Everybody have a great evening, thanks.
Thanks, folks.